...for a resolution on nominating for landmark status. And gave, and it certainly led the HPC to believe, you know, their role in this. And I think there was some confusion about how staff went to HPC and asked for this resolution. But on December 11th, nevertheless, a resolution solicited by staff was passed nominating this for landmark status. And I want to read code section 4.8-8.08i. Interim prohibition. From the time the Historic Preservation Commission adopts its recommendation until the time the council either declares the landmark or declares, determines not to declare the landmark, the time period involved not to exceed 90 days, the property owner shall be prohibited from defacing, demolishing, adding to, altering, or removing the landmark. This is in our code. There may be something that legally, because of the circumstances, can be thought of as maybe why we, this code is not binding. Frankly, I don't care. It's important that the HPC's expectations on this matter be respected. And they brought this up in our workshop and were very clear about it, that they felt staff was telling them unwritten policy was the owner can withdraw an application and no application for landmark status will proceed without owner approval, which is not in the code and we don't have unwritten policies written by staff. I think it's extremely important that the planning commission respects the HPC's position in this matter. And that, in fact, I have a suggested addition to the design review permit having to do with, and I'll read it, and this is just a suggestion, that given HPC Resolution 14-05 and the provisions, provisions of Municipal Code 4.808i, final approval of DRP 1419 is specifically referred to the next available city council meeting for review and final approval or amendment of stipulations associated with planning commission approval to allow a chance for the HPC to speak to the issue. That's the point. In no case will defacing, demolishing, adding to, altering, or removing any element of any existing structures on assessors parcel 023, et cetera, occur until 90 days after December 11th, 2014, the time of the resolution. This is about our commissions working together in a respectful way. There were expectations given to the HPC and irreg- completely separate from the aspects, the quality aspects of this project, I think it's important that the planning commission respect that. And also, I want to point out that the council controls its own agenda and I'm going to certainly ask that the, as opposed to the agenda item being withdrawn, that the council indeed bring this up and have it on the agenda. And I think that's an opportunity to kind of clear the air and understand how the commission should be operating and making sure that the HPC's involvement that was solicited is respected rather than just ignored. That's not a staff decision.
Calling the meetings to order. This is the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission, February 18th. Members of the public wishing to address the planning commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card. They're located in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission and not to the audience. And while the planning commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the chair. Can we have a roll call, please?
Foster, Merk.
Here.
Jagiello.
Here.
Zabella.
Here.
Nicklin.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Nolan.
Here.
Lojewski.
Here.
Okay, so next we've got our public communications and this is the time that's set outside during the regular planning commission meeting for members of the public to address the planning commission on items of city business other than the scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will be referred to staff and are placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. So let me go through this. I've got several cards here and I want to make sure I've got everybody at the right time. So that's, alright. One, one. Alright, I've got one card here for William Wirick.
Chair Nolan, members of the commission, I just wanted to appear as a member of the council but not as your liaison over there. But I wanted to come because I had a particular concern about matters that go, that need to be addressed and then they're just sort of put off for a long time and not addressed. And remind you, as an individual council person, that we passed a resolution suspending the enforcement of M1 in, for the office building use, I mean, in that zone. And section three of that resolution at our last meeting specifically says the planning commission is directed to initiate a study of the purpose of the M1 zone, including the current uses, and to make recommendations to the city council regarding any proposed changes to the uses permitted and prohibited within that zone. Furthermore, the council included a stipulation that the suspension will be until June 10th, 2015, unless extended by city council resolution. And so I'm conveying this action to you with a personal individual council request to please agendaize this for discussion, decide what information you need from staff in terms of history and research, and get some recommendations to us because I personally, again, as an individual council person, find this to be a perfect example of the kind of thing that we have a problem. We suspend, but we should not leave that suspension in place for an extended period. We need to get on it. Thank you.
A brief question would certainly be in order.
Okay. My question would be, where in our agenda, if we wanted to bring this up, what would be the appropriate time to do that? This particular item that was brought up during the public comment?
I think a request, I mean, we couldn't discuss it in detail because it isn't on tonight's agenda.
Right.
But I think a request could be made now, as raised by the, by Councilmember Wirick's comments, that staff added to the next agenda.
Okay, good.
And I think that statement would do the trick.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments on that or questions? Otherwise, John, go ahead.
I just want to say, I appreciate the council's urgency in getting this done, but I don't feel any personal urgency. I don't think that we, I don't know why they think that this is the way to do things, but I'm sure we can look at it at some point in the future, but.
And I think next week's, next week's agenda, or next meeting's agenda is very full, the March 18th, so I don't think that would be a good time anyway. So I would, I would look at staff and ask them when, if they could just put it on the agenda at an appropriate time where it makes sense.
Right. I would agree with that.
I think staff has that direction and will evaluate when it
Okay.
is, can next fit on the agenda, taking into account that it, the moratorium as currently in place would expire in June and a new proposal has to have some time to go through the commission and then council as a process. But I'm not familiar with the next agenda items since I'm not sure what meeting makes sense.
If I could be permitted to add one additional comment, this, if it involves an ordinance change, which it may, 30 days from the time of final passage before it goes into effect. Correct?
That's correct unless done as an urgency ordinance.
Right.
So it sounds like at our soonest opening, we should at least have a staff report, get an understanding of, you know, what happened at city council so that we can move forward on it, just due to the, you know, the time that it takes to do our process, have it go back to, you know, if attorney needs to approve it, if it's going to be an ordinance or what have you, a recommendation.
The March 4th meeting, is it? That canceled?
Right. Most of us will be gone. So, okay. Any other members of the public wanting to come up and comment? No? Okay. I know, I'm having a microphone issue and it's me, not the microphone. The next item would be our disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts.
I'm quite familiar with the site on tonight's agenda.
I'm familiar with the site, but no ex parte contact.
I visited the site and no ex parte contacts.
I am very familiar with the site and no ex parte contacts.
I visited the site and no ex parte contacts.
I too am quite familiar with the site, but I've had no ex parte contacts.
Okay. Let's see, the municipal advisory council planning commission liaison report. And it looks like maybe the meeting was skipped or postponed from what I can gather.
There just hasn't been a meeting since the last
The last one?
There was one already this month.
Okay. Alright, so the next one's on the March 16th and Commissioner Lojewski will be our representative. To public hearing item number one, and that is for variance 14-03 for setbacks in design review permit DRP 14-19 for the remodel of an historic bookstore, Twice Sold Tales, and the addition of a meeting room in pergola. The assessor's parcel number is 023-0-077-080. The general plan land use designation of the site is general commercial, GC, and zoning classification of the site is general commercial, CI. The categorical exemption has been prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. Property owner applicant is the Ojai Valley Library Friends and Foundation. The representative is Josh Griffin for Cornerstone Landscape, excuse me, Architects. And that's, this is a continued item from February 4th, 2015. And could we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, chair, commissioners, members of the public. Sherry, can you turn that on for me, please? While we're getting, we have a PowerPoint presentation for you this evening, but I wanted to let you know about the handouts that you have on the dais in front of you this evening. One is the resolution, which has a suggested wording change for you on page three of the resolution, pages two and three of the resolution, and we'll go through that at the end of the presentation. There's also a copy of the minutes from the Historic Preservation Commission dated Thursday, October the 9th, 2014. These minutes are when this, when Twice Sold Tales first came to them for the discussion of landmark status, for the concept review, excuse me. And then lastly, you have the Phase 1 and Phase 2 Historic Resources Report that was done in conjunction with the landmark status that the, that at the time the applicant was interested in pursuing. Just a note to the commission, the applicant, as of today, has withdrawn their application for landmark status, so that item will not be going to the city council next week. And now, the PowerPoint presentation, you can see on either screen, as, let's go back, sorry. There are two things that the planning commission is going to take a look at tonight in particular. One is the design review permit and the other is the variance. Basically, the design review permit is before you this evening because the project entails modification to an existing structure. There are a couple of things that you should know about what the applicant is proposing and there's a detailed discussion in your staff report, but I've provided a couple of highlights here for you on the screen. One is that they're proposing to reconfigure the bookstore and add approximately 779 square feet. They're also adding a meeting room in the back for another approximately 700 square feet. And they're planning to reconstruct the pergola and the front entryway in such a way that it resembles the original facade dated 1922. And there are a number of pictures in your staff report that show what that's going to look like when it's completed. In terms of the variance, the reason that the variance is before you this evening for consideration is that when the facade is constructed, the front yard setback will only be six feet one inch rather than the normal setback of 10 feet. It's important to note that the front yard setback that would be in place if the pergola is, is constructed, is consistent with all the other buildings on the street and I'll provide a little more discussion about that in a few minutes. The rear yard setback with the addition of the meeting room would be at zero feet rather than the required 15 feet. The lot coverage because of the size of the addition that's being proposed would be approximately 72% rather than 50%, which is normally allowed for in this zoning district. And lastly, the applicant is not providing any on-site parking, but the site currently does not have any on-site parking anyway, so it's considered a legal non-conforming use. And I'm not even going to bother reading the slide to you because all of the variance, the findings needed to make a variance are in your staff report. But basically, in order to grant the variance, you need to be able to make all of these findings. And I apologize for the side of, size of the type font on this slide. So if you want to refer to that page in your staff report, I can tell you that it's on page, let's see, it's on page, six of eight of your staff report has an, has an overview of all of the findings that you need to make in order to grant the variance for the project this evening. And then there are a number of reasons why staff is recommending granting of the variance this evening. Again, I'll review them for you briefly because this slide is hard to read. Addition of the pergola in the front setback is consistent with rehabilitation of something that was there when the building was first constructed. So building into the setback would, would not be something that was incon, that is inconsistent with what's being proposed. And also, all of the other buildings along that side of the street are at that same level of setback, so this, this would not be sticking out further than anything that is already there. Adding the meeting room to the area in the back of the building, even though that would result in a zero rear yard setback, is, is something that is really needed for the community. Currently, a number of groups meet in the library and the library is already overcrowded with its existing uses and the meeting room is frequently booked up and, and special uses aren't able to use the meeting room. So by having Twice Sold Tales having a meeting room, then they really have a reciprocal arrangement with the library. So this is a case where there would be special circumstances to warrant a variance. And then lastly, granting the variance would allow property owners the same rights of other businesses in the area by being able to build into the front yard setback and also having lot coverage that is consistent with other buildings in this particular zoning district. And then, one of the findings that the, the commission would need to make is that the project is exempt from SEQA and it is met all of the requirements of both the city's environmental review process and does not require any additional SEQA work. And the project basically complies with the provisions of SEQA as follows. Class 1 categorical exemption for the provisions of SEQA and class 1 basically includes modifications to existing structures. And then, this is a fairly lengthy paragraph, but you can see it at the end of your, of the Historic Resources Report that we provided for you. And I'm going to read this finding into the record because I think it's important for the record to reflect this. And basically, the conclusion of the, the Phase 1 and Phase 2 Historic Resources Report states as follows. "This project as proposed appears to partially conform with the Secretary of Interior Standards. Additional measures incorporated into the project description call for documenting the existing building, reusing or reproducing historic features where feasible, in this case, the pergola that I discussed already, and restoring an important character-defining feature, which again is the pergola in the front. With these considerations taken together, the property's eligibility for city of land, city of Ojai landmark designation does not appear to be impaired by the proposed project and its adverse impact on a historic resource is less than significant for the purposes of SEQA." And I wanted that to be reflected in the record, which is why I read that verbatim for you. And then lastly, staff is recommending a number of actions for the planning commission to take this evening. Number one is to adopt the resolution, which is provided in your packet. However, we would like for you to consider the resolution that you have on the dais. There are a couple of changes to that, most notably on pages two and three. And there, there are some explanation that need to go along with this. Basically, on page two, has to do with the findings of the variance and there's a little bit more of an explanation as to why the variance can be granted. And I'm not going to read you this word for word because it is available to you to take a look at and discuss during your commission discussion period. But basically, this helps clarify any special circumstances that would be applicable to the property, including location, shape, size, surroundings, or topography, so that the strict application of the zoning regulations denies the property owner a privilege as enjoyed by other property in the vicinity and under identical zoning classification. And then we provided some additional documentation which substantiates being able to make that finding. And then if you move on to the second page, under item six, again, there's some further clarification about granting the variance, which ensures that the property owner will enjoy the same rights as the other property owners on the street, specifically a zero setback and no parking requirements. The other actions that we would like the planning commission to consider taking this evening are to adopt the required findings for the design review permit and for the variance, including the SEQA findings, accept the SEQA categorical exemption, and approve both the design permit and the variance, subject to the conditions of approval which you have before you in the resolution. That concludes my staff report. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? John?
Well, I'm just, I'm kind of looking at this, I don't have any problem with the justification of the variance, but I'm just wondering if we're saying, oh, everybody already has zero setbacks down there, so these people should have them. Are we sort of setting a precedent, just saying, well, if you have a property in downtown, you don't need to comply with setbacks?
No, I don't view this as setting a precedent because each application has to be viewed on its own merits. And in this case, it wouldn't set a precedent for all of down, well, back up. It doesn't set any precedent because each application is viewed on its own merits. And I don't think it sets the precedent for downtown that setbacks need to be considered. I think it would be limited to this type of a situation where you have every other property on that block has a zero setback except this one. And where the property, and it also makes sense where the property previously had the same zero setback, as I understand it. If someone comes in where there are a variety of setbacks on a block, then the variance findings would be much harder to make. Or if they come in where everybody in the block has a four-foot setback and they want to be two-foot, again, it would be harder to make because there'd be no consistency between that proposed variance and the rest of the project. Here, the variance is consistent with the remainder of the block. And so I think that consistency element is what makes this different than your typical application just to change the setbacks and would be different than a number of other potential parcels that might come in from the same point.
Thank you.
I have a question. John, I had that same question. Is there a percentage when you're looking at consistency? Because we, I mean, we've had other issues where variances have come up and, you know, it's like, well, there's been several properties within a neighborhood that have had certain setbacks and somebody wanted them. Is there, you know, a defining percentage or calculation?
No, I don't think there's a defining percentage based on any particular, oh, it's, they're all within X percent. I think it has to be looked at as a particular application comes up on a case-by-case basis. I think in this case, the trick is that it's all the same except the one.
Thank you. Alright, any, any other? Nope. Alright, I'm going to open up the public hearing and I've got quite a few speaker cards. And the first one I've got, or actually, you know what, I'm sorry, I should open the applicant. That was a mistake on my part to give, come up if you've got anything you'd like to share with us or give us the opportunity to ask you questions.
Good evening. My name is Josh Griffin for Cornerstone Architects. I'm the representative for Ojai Valley Library Friends and Foundation. Staff did a pretty good job of explaining exactly what's going on, so I'll just emphasize a few points. This organization is a nonprofit. Everything they do is for the benefit of the Ojai Library and the greater community of Ojai at large. So everything that they're trying to do right now is basically for the benefit of the community. When we first approached, they approached us with this project, the intention was to make this meeting space for the use of the community in addition to the library use. And at the same time, remodel the bookstore to bring it up, that building to current codes because there were some structural issues with it. It was between the foundation and our firm, we decided that in the best interest of the community to retain as much of the historical nature of the building as possible. So in that vein, we are attempting to keep the facade of this building as intact and as historically accurate as possible, actually adding to the historical nature by adding this pergola to it that matches historically, the historical photos that we have of the time. So everything we're doing right now, in our view at least, is trying to make this a better project for the community. There have been a lot of potholes we've had to navigate to get to this point. I feel like we're there now. And in terms of the design, it hasn't changed much from your original view that most of you saw in the concept review. The one minor change is we removed one of the skylights that was closest to the street because there was potential for it to be visible from the street, which would have detracted from the, again, the historical nature of the projects. We removed the closest skylight. That was basically the only change we made to the project since our last, our last time here. So hopefully that makes it an even better project. And then, of course, we, you know, added the detail, the landscape, which I'm sure will come up. And we tried to, you know, be typical Ojai native plants and drought tolerant landscaping and basically make it a nice place in the backyard for both this building and the library, which it shares the courtyard in the back with. So staff explained everything else, but I'm here available for any questions you might have.
Any questions?
I'd just like to congratulate you guys on doing a really nice job with this design.
Thank you.
It was comparing this with the previous proposal from the library for a meeting room there, this is like night and day. This is a really beautiful job.
Luckily, we had more information than they have where we determined that they actually owned this property, which made it a lot easier.
And so originally, you were going to apply for the landmark status and then now you've decided not to, is that correct?
Yeah, and I'm not sure I'm the best one to answer this question, but
I was just curious.
I can say, basically, the landmark status opened up more of a can of worms than was intended. We thought that was the best, and working with the staff, we thought that was the best avenue towards, to getting this project across. But in, in retrospect, it caused more problems than, than going this route of just using a standard variance. And I think staff could probably explain it better than, than I can.
Madam Chair?
Please.
The landmark application isn't required to process the, the changes they want to do to the building, including the variance and the DRP. And the, and granting a variance contingent on a landmark application is strongly disfavored. And I would strongly recommend against that because it gets in the nature of a quid pro quo, which is not a legal reason to grant a variance. The variance has to be focused on comparing what's proposed against the variance findings in the code and in state law providing for variances. Is it a property where there are special circumstances that are different than those around and would deny the variance, deny the property owner privileges, benefits enjoyed by other property owners in the area? That analysis needs to happen independent of whether or not they have voluntarily applied for a landmark designation. And so I, staff ensured the separation of those two points. And once that was made clear to the applicant that they are not tied together, the applicant then evaluated, well, do I need to do landmark? No, I don't need to. Would I like to do this? That's the choice that they've made and they've made the choice not to move forward at this time with landmark. Of course, the landmark application is something they could bring forward at a future date, should they so choose.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions for the applicant? No? Okay, we think, thank you, and we, I think it's a great project.
Thank you.
So now I will open it up to the public. And I do have speaker cards. Next, I have Pat Tumamite.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Tumamite. I live at 992 El Camino Corto in Ojai. Good evening, Commissioners. This is in regards to the archaeological and cultural resources that are nearby, within two blocks, and the consultation process is still yet ignored on our, in our behalf. I would certainly like to be able to be involved with situations that entail archaeological resources within projects that are nearby. It's, it's a resource, it's, once it's destroyed, it's gone forever. And the part of the process is following the general plan, to speak with us, talk with us, engage with us, so that we can cover those issues as a community outside of non-native people, indigenous people, what we are. And I would like to see that the commission follow through those processes and consult with us, and be a part of this situation, be a part of this city, be a part of the decisions being made by this council. We've been here a long time, many, many years, and I would like to see this, these resources protected. Now, I understand that there's a requirement of an archaeologist and consultant within this project, but the protocol is missed. Consultation is being missed, you know, from the get-go. We should be involved with the process from the get-go, and I would certainly like to see the commission do that. Thank you again.
Thank you. Next, Alistair Coyne.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, my name's Alistair Coyne. I've lived in Ojai for thirty-five years or so. I was planning to address the historic elements of this building today, and it seems to be on shaky ground, although perhaps Councilman Wierke has made that ground more solid again. My understanding is it's the Historic Preservation Commission that designates Ojai Historic Landmarks, and that such designation is not required to have the approval of the owner of the property. So whether the owner requests historic landmark status or withdraws that request for historic landmark status is actually irrelevant to the process of designating a landmark in Ojai. We have no information on the Historic Preservation Commission withdrawing the twice-told tales historic landmark status, which is currently underway. This new information tonight was introduced to this meeting without proper public notice, and the matter must therefore be continued till the next meeting with proper public notice. And if necessary, perhaps the city attorney could clarify this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dawn, I'm hoping I pronounced this correctly, I think it's Theding, Rithiting? Twice, okay, my apologies.
Dawn Theding, North Signal Street. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I too was prepared to speak more to the historic resource aspect, and understand there's been a change tonight. So I have a few items for your consideration. Firstly, the information presented before you tonight, the minutes from the Historic Preservation Commission meeting, the historian report, as well as the change in landmark status, is all new news to the public as of tonight. None of that information was provided to the public. And also of note, I would like to suggest to the applicant that my observation is that the problem is not with the landmarking process, the problem is with the routing process by the city and the review by the city staff. Secondly, looking at the Ojai Municipal Code, Section 10-2.103, this code requires that all development be consistent with the Ojai General Plan. The Ojai General Plan requires preservation of historic resources and investigation of cultural resources. This includes both prehistoric and historic archaeological sites. I will remind you of what was found under the theater and appeared in the newspaper just a week ago. These are historic archaeological finds. The administrative report provided tonight lacks evaluation of general plan consistency for cultural resources, and lacks evaluation of archaeological resources involved in this project. Further, it is unclear why historic resources' conditions of approval require monitoring for cultural resources during grading, when grading is not even discussed in this project's scope. Thirdly, city staff recommends a categorical exemption from CEQA for the proposed project. Per CEQA Guideline, Section 153002F, quote, "A categorical exemption shall not be used for a project which may cause a substantial adverse change in the significance of a historical resource." California Public Resources Code, Section 21084, adds that, quote, "A project that may result in damage to historic buildings shall not be exempted." Determination of CEQA applicability cannot be made until the significance of archaeological and historic resources within the project area have been identified and evaluated. This administrative report for this project lacks evidence of any archaeological resource review and determination of the adverse change in the significance of a historical resource, nor is justification provided for exempting the development based on CEQA that involves a known historic resource. I therefore request that Design Review Permit 1419 be indefinitely continued to allow city staff to appropriately, number one, review development for general plan compatibility according to the Cultural Resource Section of the Conservation Element; number two, appropriately identify, evaluate, and disclose all potential impacts to historic and cultural resources. An independent qualified archaeologist should assess potential impacts, and the local Chumash tribal designees should be consulted. Number three, if archaeological monitoring is recommended as a result of this investigation, the monitoring should be changed to all earth-disturbing activities, not just grading. And number four, I request that the Historic Preservation Commission be considered and notified appropriately. As you heard before, my understanding, based on what happened with the NEF lounge, is that owner, owner approval is not required for landmark status. So I, again, encourage you to consult with the Historic Preservation Commission. In summary, I urge you to indefinitely continue this project at the historic bookstore until these important issues are resolved, and you are provided with the necessary information to make an informed decision on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. I have one more speaker card, Steve Quillessi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Steve Quillessi, 516 West Eucalyptus. I may have misheard the contract planner's comments, but I thought she said there are some changes to the draft resolution that you have in front of you. We're all familiar with the, with the fiasco of your last scheduled meeting, where the company, or I'm sorry, the city website had one version of a resolution, the county, the commission had a separate, different set of markups of that resolution, and there was a third set out here in the foyer for the audience to pick up, and then additional changes brought forth during the meeting by city staff. We can't go on this way. Right now, I would, I would suggest that you don't know for sure what you are voting on if you vote on a resolution. And I can guarantee you, the public doesn't know what you're voting on if you vote on a resolution right now. These things should be in black-letter documents, and they should be on the city website for the public to look at, to comment to you, because you work for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Quillessi. Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak at this point? No? Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing and open it for discussion amongst the Commissioners.
I think we need to hear from the city attorney about, especially the items of the landmark status.
I was wondering, too, if we could hear if the applicant wants to respond to any of these.
Well, that's true, too. Yeah.
And I would suggest taking that first card that just showed up first.
Oh, and actually, that's for item number, agenda item number two.
Oh, never mind.
Yeah, but thank you. Yeah, so maybe we should do that, bring the applicant back up, I'm sorry, and see if they have any comments, based on the public comment, and then we'll go back to staff.
Again, Josh Griffin for the applicant. My only comment is that our intention was to, to make this project historically accurate. That's been our intention all along. We have presented it, this project, to the Historical Planning Commission twice, with favorable reviews from them so far. We were somehow, there was some miscommunication between us and staff, and we were led to believe that a landmark designation was required in order to get this variance. That was the sole reason that we pursued this, this avenue of the landmark designation. Since then, there have been some questions that have come up about, is it possible to give landmark designation to something that hasn't actually been built yet? Because without the pergola, half of the, the historical accuracy of this project is missing still. So can we give historical landmark to a facade before we add the pergola? Or should we wait until after the pergola is added to this, have a cohesive, historically accurate structure, and then apply for the historical landmark? So there's been some confusion, and honestly, our intention is just to make this thing as historically accurate as possible, and make it as much of a benefit for the community as possible. All these hoops we've had to jump through for a nonprofit is becoming costly and, and, you know, and they're basically doing this for the good of the community. So I just want you to, you know, take that into consideration. We're open to doing whatever we can to make this happen as expeditiously as possible, because it is a financial outlay every time we have to come back, and a lot of time has passed since we started this process. I'd just like to make sure you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant at this point? No? All right. Now I'll, we can go back to staff and hear your responses.
Okay, thank you. A couple of points I want to cover. The first is that, reiterate the point, that the variants and the landmark need to be separated. I realize that that was the understanding previously, and that may have been the understanding of the HPC when they last reviewed this at the concept level. That understanding is false, and thus needs to be changed. And we're changing it now, because the variance hasn't yet been issued, so the harm hasn't happened. We're solving the problem before the harm has happened. And I realize that's a change from what the HPC understood, and that's a change. So the variance is independent of the landmark designation. And that's why the variants findings that we drafted in the revised resolution available for your review tonight, which I also understand is available at the public table, for the public to review, with the two additions being additional sentences regarding the variants findings. Those are structured to make clear that the variances can be approved, if the commission so finds, based solely on the special circumstances of this property and the denial of benefits to the other properties, that the variant... Oh, she's making more copies. Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, there were no copies.
Oh, okay, then we'll have more copies made available. Thank you for letting me know. Decoupling the landmark and the variants thus solves that problem. Because otherwise, if the variance was granted based on landmark alone, it would be an illegal variance, and we do not want to permit that to be done. And I, again, I realize that that's a change from what was previously, previously the case. I come in and I evaluate this, and that's my full legal opinion. The next element of it is the landmark designation itself, and whether or not a property can be landmarked over the property owner's objections. And it is possible. But the landmark designation has to go, as it has done, through the HPC, and then up to council. The property owner has to be given, here it is, under Section 4808J. If the property owner objects, and we can take the statements of the applicant tonight, coupled with a letter withdrawing the landmark, the landmark designation request today as an objection, although we can also request a formal objection. If an objection is filed, they have to be offered the opportunity to object, and that provides that objection. The council can determine the landmark over the top of it, if the appropriate findings can be made. My recommendation is that the landmark application be evaluated, independent of the variants findings, again, because the two need to be separated. Whether that is considered at council on Tuesday or not is up to the council. It could be considered. I think that we need to make sure that we provide the applicant sufficient opportunity to prepare an objection, and it might make sense to continue it later, so that they have the opportunity to prepare that objection to the materials, realizing that they were previously coming in as a, as a voluntary landmark designation, now they've, under the understanding that they previously had, that they had to do so. That was a false understanding. We need to give them opportunity, the applicant needs to be given the opportunity to respond to that change of circumstances.
One quick question. So the applicant made the change today?
Yes.
The withdrawal? Okay.
The withdrawal was done today.
The public hearing is closed, so I'm going to let staff finish during the report. And then...
So, yeah, the applicant submitted, the applicant was notified today that the variants is not required, that the landmark isn't required to get the variants, and thus they then withdrew it, once they realized that it was not required. And that, that date is a function of my review of the materials. I wasn't brought onto this project until it was before this commission. So that is why it was today. And the landmark designation can be reviewed by the council. I would recommend that it be continued, to give them time to do so, though that's up to the mayor and the council members setting the council's agenda. But I think the key is, and then with regard to the interim prohibition, that ninety-day period comes from the HPC's recommendation, and if the council, if the Planning Commission approves the permits tonight, given the time required to get a building permit, I believe that ninety-day period will have passed. Because I believe the, and again, it can be dealt with, there's time to evaluate, have the council evaluate the recommendation, or the council could choose, in deference to the applicant, to pull it off and leave it be, recognizing that this isn't your typical situation, because the applicant requested the landmark designation, understanding that that was what they had to do, and that's not the case. But again, the prohibition is on changes in the ground, the prohibition is not on getting a permit for changes in the ground. In other words, the ninety-day prohibition doesn't require this commission to not make a decision tonight, because it's a prohibition on, to quote, "The property owner shall be prohibited from defacing, demolishing, adding to, altering, or removing the landmark." Here, the, granting the permits doesn't do any of that. The landmark, that can be evaluated, independent of tonight's decisions. The approval would be for this, and then if the landmark is approved, then they would go back to the HPC for a work permit, and then it would be, then they could go on and get the building permits. You can approve tonight's permits, independent of that. And I think that's the main points.
I've got a question on that particular item.
Commissioner particularly, Al.
Yep. So can you explain to us the protocol on who has, once the HPC makes a resolution, and it's in place, does staff have the ability to go against that resolution? How would they go about that process? Because it appears that the...
Once the HPC's resolution is recommending as a landmark, it should then be submitted to the council. And staff prepares reports, but it should go to the council. Staff doesn't have the ability to pull it off. The applicant can, as they have, withdraw their consent, as they have done here, which should change the analysis, particularly here, where they were told that they had to do so. This is different than your typical situation. But as a general rule, no, staff cannot simply override a decision by any commission. Any commission decision is appealable to the council, any staff decision is appealable to the relevant commission, but staff can't simply override it. However, of course, as I have done tonight, when a decision, when a commission recommendation is fundamentally legal, then staff can strongly recommend that it not be followed. And here, that's why we've worded, we've revised the wording of the variants findings, to ensure that the variants, that the variants is decoupled from the landmark. That's not so much overriding the commission, as ensuring that the city is protected.
So, Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
So, could we...
So, could we approve this tonight without the red line stuff in there, or is that something that we have to include?
I would strongly caution against approving it without the red line information. That's my recommendation, not to do so.
Yeah, I just, I know the public hasn't had a chance to review it, as Mr. Willis said.
Yeah, and my comment was that it wasn't in our packet until we sat down tonight, so I haven't even had a chance to, like, you know, thoroughly read through those documents, let alone the public having a chance to look at it. So I'm a little concerned about that.
And I can speak on that with regard to the Brown Act point. The Brown Act requires notification of items to be considered, not a full packet. So adding, from a Brown Act perspective, adding information, adding a red line resolution does not violate the Brown Act. The Brown Act's requirement is that the public be notified within 72 hours ahead of a regular meeting of what is to be considered, not the exact text of every document. That said, that doesn't resolve the broader concern about public notification. That certainly could be resolved through a continuance, but just from a Brown Act perspective, adding red line resolutions is legal.
Do we have any other questions for staff at the moment?
Yeah, the archaeological stuff that's brought up, but the monitoring and that, how does that work now with granting the variance proceeding?
Yeah, it would be just the same as any other project. There wouldn't, I'm going to let Matt, the city attorney, answer that in greater detail.
Yeah, the archaeological monitoring requirements would continue the same as any other project, and it would be the default requirements. I'm not familiar with exactly how the city structures those requirements, but it would not be, granting the variance doesn't change those requirements. It changes how far the building, the envelope they can build in.
All right, I have a question along those same lines. So there is a known archaeological site within blocks of that property. I know because I've worked on properties in that area. And did we follow the correct procedure as far as notifying our local Chumash? And I know this has come up in the last couple, well, I think since December. There is that new state law. I'm not sure when it goes into effect regarding notification and involvement.
AB 52 doesn't take effect until July 1st.
July 1st, okay.
And that requires notification of the tribe and an opportunity to consult with the tribe on tribal resources, but that doesn't take effect until July 1st. So this, we didn't apply the AB 52 process to this project, because it doesn't yet apply.
Right. So, so far, we've, the city has followed the correct procedure. We, there's nothing that's been left out as far as archaeological?
That's my understanding.
... notification? Well, do we want to go for a little more discussion between us? Or does someone want to make a motion?
It's a little frustrating to definitely be thinking that we reviewed this project previously, and that this was going to be fairly straightforward, and then all of a sudden, you know, we are dealing with another can of worms. That said, I, just speaking for myself, I would really like to clarify that, that I don't feel I work for anyone. I feel that I volunteer my precious time on behalf of this community, and I take that responsibility really seriously, and just would like that point clarified. I don't think these two red line items are, have much import. I mean, I think they speak to the variances, and I think it's pretty straightforward, and I think it's apprehended in the two minutes it takes to read it. So I don't, I don't find that too startling. My, so you're saying we can go ahead and approve these without otherwise impeding the issue of historic preservation?
Right. The approvals tonight are independent of the historic preservation issues on this property.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think that this project has overwhelmingly huge community benefits, and acknowledging their nonprofit status and the good that it does, I really would like to see us move forward tonight and hope that the process unfolds quickly on their behalf with regard to landmark designation.
I'm noticing a couple hands going up, and I'm going to allow the public to come and reopen the public communication time. Would you like to come forward?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak again. And I appreciate the city attorney's clarification on a number of items, but there are still three which remain unquestioned. One regarding the public notice information. We were just provided with the red line copy, but the public still was not provided with the minutes of the Historic Preservation Commission, nor the minutes of the historian report for the project, which were, which had been referenced, as well as, again, the change in the landmark status. The public was just noticed at this evening's meeting. Second point, the issue of landmarking and the timing of this permit. One of the issues, again, with CEQA is you cannot exempt a project if there's a known historic resource. The fact that the HPC has identified this facade as a historic resource means CEQA does apply, and there needs to be an appropriate evaluation as to whether or not this project impacts this resource. Number three, with regards to the archaeological resources, the city attorney had commented that the procedures had been followed. It is true that the AB 52 does not go into effect till January, or excuse me, July 1st. However, the city council did request that the tribe, the consultation process begin with the tribe immediately. Secondly, on that point, the city has a general plan, and that general plan specifically requires the review of known and potential cultural resources. To our knowledge, there was no review by an archaeologist of this project. What would have been appropriate is for an archaeologist to conduct a phase one, what's known as a phase one study, where there's a record search and then a pedestrian survey of the land, and to make an appropriate determination by an archaeologist as to whether or not there might be impact. One thing with the archaeology, it includes both cultural resources and the historic, prehistoric resources, as well as historic resources. A lot of times when buildings like this come down, there are historic artifacts that are found, and those should be appropriately documented for the benefit of the Ojai community. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else who wants to make a comment? There was one other person, I think he left. I'm sorry, unfortunately. Mr. Wierich?
I'll be real quick. Again, I think I restate my concern. It's respect for commissions, relationship between commissions. This is, to me, extremely important. I want to make sure that, I want to reread something about the motion that the HPC passed in December 11th. And again, this was their mindset. This was their expectation at the time, in good faith, that they were acting. And it had to do with the approving the miscellaneous permit 14-14, accepting the categorical exemption. In other words, they accepted the categorical exemption, but conditioned, recommending that the landmark of the front facade, roofline, and proposed pergola on the property located at 121 East Ojai Avenue, also known as Twice Old Tales Bookstore, with the added condition, this is the motion of the HPC, with the added condition to require the applicant to apply for a work permit to be reviewed by the HPC, demonstrating the details and elements of the project are consistent with the design of the original building. Now, it's absolutely true that a work permit does not have to be issued until after a landmark status, but this motion provided the categorical exemption from their point of view, based on those conditions, on the information they had in place. So I'm, again, I'm concerned with the, you know, I'm concerned with the respect to the HPC. I'm concerned, I have, I think actually it's a good idea to go ahead. I have no objections to going ahead with the approval of the variance and the design review permit, as long as there still is a circling round back to the HPC, because that was how they acted, and that's what their expectation was. And I think their intent was to provide the categorical exemption, to not require the EIR, request it from their point of view, on the basis that they would be part of the process of making sure that this project continued with the attributes that would make it eligible for a landmark status. And I just want to, I want to point that out, and just in the standpoint of the commissions need to work properly together. That's my only, that's the point I want to make.
Thank you. Any other comments? One more from the applicant?
I just want to make it clear that we had no time objected to getting the landmark designation status. We were under the impression and told that that was the best route in getting this approved, and that's why we pursued it. At this point, whether we get the landmark status now, or at the end of the project, or how it's, how the bureaucracy is handled, I guess it's up to you guys. We just want to get things going as quickly as possible, and the longer it takes, like I said before, the more money it costs. So if we could separate the two, like has been recommended, approve the design review, and even get the landmark designation approved by city council at the next meeting, and just keep moving forward, that's fine with us, as long as we can keep the ball rolling.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, I'll reclose the public comment period.
Yeah, I just want to say, I mean, I really think that, from my perspective, on the planning commission, we have a great relationship and a great respect for the Historical Preservation Commission. Particularly, we worked very closely together on the NEF Lounge. I think we made a strong support of their position on that. There's also a history of other items that we worked very closely, and we respect the Historical Preservation Commission. So I don't think that should necessarily be called into question, but I just want to let the record state that clearly. Thank you.
Jerick, could I have a moment?
Yes.
I want to clarify the extra materials that were given out. You know, we publish our agendas on Friday, and between Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we get comments and questions from the public sent to us via email. The reason that we presented the minutes before you tonight had to do with the minutes that were, had to do with when it went as a concept plan, because it seemed to us, the comments we were getting from people sent to email to me, was people were confusing not only the minutes from the HPC meeting, because it went twice, but also the category exemptions, which there are two. And it was very confusing, because even staff here was working on bringing this project to planning commission this, tonight, and bringing it to city council Tuesday night last week. We work on both those agendas in the same week. So these extra materials were not because we didn't do our work, it's because of comments that were generated, questions that were generated. We wanted to make sure that you had the materials, that questions were going to, bound to be asked of you. So the minutes that we're giving you tonight from the HPC had to do with a concept review, not those that keep on being brought up and commented regarding the landmarking. Again, the city attorney has made it very clear to us, we have a different city attorney, has made it very clear to us, that we cannot commingle them. So in here, we provide the comments that were regarding the HPC, regarding the concept review of the variance and the site plan. Nothing to do with the landmark. It's not, that was done specifically to clarify the issue. The reason the historic report wasn't given to you originally was, again, you know, the thought was, you're not looking at landmarking, you're looking at the DRP. The HPC has already looked at the landmarking, and the only reason it was given to you was specific for that, the statement that was read into the record, where this historian has made the finding that for CEQA purposes, it's less insignificant. Because again, these questions keep on coming up regarding whether or not staff is doing their due diligence with CEQA. So it's only to answer the questions that we continue to receive after our packets have been published, and it's only for points of clarification. And we hope that, you know, I mean, we could make our packets bigger and put maybe everything and anything in them, but then we end up confusing people. So we're trying to straighten the two paths off and make sure that you understand, two cat exempts, two processes, two minutes, and I hope that that really helps why it came late. Thank you.
Thank you. That did help. Yes.
Once again, Ms. Wald, I said once again, I'd just like to thank you for clarifying the issue. I understand that you are often the punching bag for this community for things supposedly not getting done correctly, and it's really, it's really out of line, and it's unfair. And I think that we all need to take a step back and realize that Ms. Wald is one person, and have a little more respect for the responsibilities that she has.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Lawrence.
So if we, for staff, if we go ahead and grant the variance and the design review permit, can we condition things like the archaeological report and archaeological monitoring in the process? That's my question.
I'd just like to point out, in the conditions for the thing, item nine says, "The applicant shall ensure Native American and archaeological monitors are present on site during all grading operations," and so on. There's like two paragraphs about architectural, archaeological resources. So as far as I'm concerned, I think we're covered on that.
All right. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'd like to move, we adopt the PC resolution. Yes. Well, I want to read it out of here where it's written down. I don't know. All right, I'll read it off the screen. Adopt the planning commission resolution, and adopt the required findings for design review permit, DRP 14-19, and variance VAR 1403, including the CEQA findings, and accept the CEQA categorical exemption, and approve DRP 14-19 and VAR 1403, subject to the conditions of approval.
Mr. Jagiella, see you.
Did he, I guess, you know, we want to, we want to approve the revised set?
Right.
Not the original set? That's the only change.
Yeah, my motion includes the red lines that are in there.
Okay.
I want to clarify that.
Do we have a second then? Okay. Any more, any more discussion? No? Okay, roll call.
Yes.
Jagiella?
Yes.
Zavilla?
Yes.
Nicklin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Yes.
Lojowski?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make one other note here, too. Several people have said, "How come we don't have access to the Historic Preservation Commission minutes?" These minutes that we have are from October 9th of 2014, and then there was another meeting December 11th. These have been up on the city website for months. It's not like this is new news.
All right, so now we're going to the informational items. Right. And I do have, I'm just going to let you know, I do have a speaker card for...
Okay, you want to take him first, or?
I guess I could. Mr. William Ulrich, would you like to make a comment?
William Ulrich, 487 Gridley Road. Yeah, I'm addressing the status. I guess what I'm requesting is that either perhaps I've missed it and it was made in a director's report at past meetings, or else it can be made in a director's report at the next meeting. I'm going to make reference to the 510 East Ojai Avenue property that was the subject of the Topa Topa Winery, CUP 14-01 and DRP 1405. I'd like to get an update on the status of those, since I have two fundamental issues. One is, on that particular property, a CUP had been carried and renewed without any work of improvement being done, which does not comply with the Ojai City Ordinance requiring work of improvement to be done within one year of the issuance of a CUP or a DRP, for approximately, I'm not sure whether it was 13 or... So now what we're looking at at that particular address is a new DRP 14-01 and a design review permit, DRP 14-05. But I, once again, they are both subject to permitted, and this is Ojai Municipal Code Section 10-2.2002, permitted use described herein pursuant to the provisions of the Ojai Municipal Code shall be conditioned upon the privilege being utilized within, excuse me, 180 days, not 12 months, after the effective date of approval stated below. If such privileges are not utilized or construction not begun within such time limit and carried out diligently to completion, the conditional use permit granting such privileges shall become null and void. So my query is, what is the status of those two referenced, the CUP and the DRP, and as well as the underlying and previous continuously renewed CUP?
May I go? Thank you. Chair.
Thank you.
Oh, so I wanted to answer your question.
Yeah, do I, should I stand?
Whatever you, whatever you prefer.
I'll do that, then. Please just punch.
Okay. So the 510 East Ojai is the Topa Brewery, not the winery, correct?
Well, you know...
You're talking about Mr. Miller's property?
Yes, that is, that is how it's referenced, but it's how it was referenced on the Planning Commission agenda of May 21, 2014, as of the winery.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, that's a, it's a, the Miller property, it was proposed to be a brewery, but...
Yeah, things change.
Yeah, things change. Anyway, that has been deemed to be expired by the city.
And that is officially notified, or is that just?
Yes, we've had...
Operation of law, et cetera?
No, we've had, I can't remember when he was in last, but it was, he was told he needed to reapply.
Okay, so there's nothing currently working on that property?
No, it's, it's expired now at this point. That one. Do you want to know anything about any of the other ones? The winery?
Well, the winery, okay.
The winery?
1401?
1401, okay. Is it, are you talking about 821 West Ojai Avenue?
No, no, I'm talking about 510 East.
Oh, no, no, right, all of it's gone.
Oh, no, you were talking about the other one.
Yeah.
No, no, I wasn't making an inquiry on that.
The one that you're talking about, yes.
Okay, very good. Answered the heck out of that question.
Okay, thanks, sorry. I'm a reporter, am I?
You're just starting.
I'm sorry, I'm just closing the book. All right. So we provide for you tonight the director's decisions, and I will tell you that we are utilizing, as I said before, this new director's exemption processing, where before I make a decision on any director's exemptions, it has to be routed to council, and then council, whether I'm going to approve one, and, or whether I'm going to deny one, both have to be routed through them and given them a chance to respond. So this last one that's down here was Giorgio's Tap Room. You might have driven by and seen that someone ran into it, and so they've actually applied for two. One was just for an awning, awning previously, and then I guess someone ran into the facade of the building, so that was granted. And the rest of these things in here are typical things, removing hazardous oak live tree, and home occupation permits, where we're doing, previous to me coming here, and, you know, the city really had not been doing home occupations permits, so you'll probably see a lot more in those, because we actually are making people actually get those now at this point. And I'll move on to the code enforcement. Again, you know, I haven't opened any questions. I think we're, we're doing pretty well. I will tell you that the code enforcement inspector, I have to keep getting, calling him inspector, not officer, will start next week. So we're really excited about that, and he'll be out doing, his main function is going to be, I think, 80% of the time he'll be here, or if maybe even more, he'll be out patrolling the community. So we're anxious to see how that goes, and of course, everybody has their pet peeve that they like up to start on first, with the highest, I think, either being leaf blowers or fences, I'm not really sure which. And then we're, I want to just explain something. We're trying to develop a new discretionary work status report, and it's in a flex, it's kind of a work and project process. We're trying to do that because there are times where all of our workload is not in one place, because we're writing city council reports, we're writing planning commission reports, we're writing HPC reports, we're writing building appeals board reports, and so they conflict with each other when they all have to be done in the same week, or, and so we're trying to get everything we're working on, so that everyone kind of knows what the staff is working on, and why we're always complaining about being overworked, you know, the amount of staff reports we're writing. And then finally, trying to give you an idea of some of the special work that we're doing, the special studies, you know, some of the things that get added to our workload, for instance, you know, we're now coming back with a height limit to the, to the certain districts for the telecommunications, which will be in other ordinance, which is on a deadline also. And then initial study for the Topa Winery, because of the type of facility it is and the magnitude, you know, it's not exempt project. And then also, we will be working on an initial study for the skilled nursing facility when that finally comes before you. And I would, I would just like to comment on that, that, you know, they did request a special meeting for you for the concept review, and since the planning commission wasn't able to accommodate them, they'll probably just not be coming forward with a concept review then. Their time, they would like to have done that, and because of the meeting on the 4th being canceled, they feel now that it's just becoming, you know, more advantageous for them just to move forward with the formal project. And so, you know, I'm open to any questions you might have on that, but I just wanted to make you aware that we did meet with him again, and he once again did ask that, you know, because he would really like to have the community have a chance at the concept plan, but, you know, I explained to them that, again, it's a special meeting. I know special meetings just kind of have a bad connotation, but in this case, it's a non-action meeting, it's just for information. But since he can't get that done, they're probably going to be submitting formally and asking to come as soon as possible to the commission. With that, concludes my presentation.
Chair?
Oh, yes.
I saw a document floating around that showed the list of council's priorities, and number, number six on that list was height, resolving the gaps in the height ordinance?
All right. I saw that, too.
That's the draft, it's number five. Okay. I'm just saying, number six behind 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
That's a city manager's report suggesting...
Okay, but it is obviously on the fast track, the height ordinance, vis a vis the cell phone tower gap?
Yes, because as explained before, this is all date sensitive, trying to protect the public from having somebody come in with an overly tall, or at least give, the public has asked for this, you know, they've pointed out, again, during the process of when we were running the ordinance, a member of the public pointed out there was a hole, which often happens, you know, that's why we have a public process. So now we're following back up, filling that hole in, and in order for us, again, it takes an initial study, because it's an ordinance, and in order for us to do that and get it up to the clearinghouse and the review agencies that it needs to be at, we do it sooner than later. And in order for, to meet that timeframe, when the telecommunications, you know, the, I know you went all through this, maybe Matt can articulate it a little bit better than me, but it's when the FCC wrote it, and then when it got published, and then so many days after, right? Maybe he could fill in for that.
Yeah, the, the new Section 629 regulations for certain modifications of wild facilities take effect April 9th. And so that's when we wanted to work as closely, given that deadline, as possible to get the height limit, height limits in place. Keeping in mind, of course, that the height limits are not just for cell towers, they apply to all facilities in those zones. And then, and so hence the initial studies, looking at what are the facilities in those zones, what makes sense in terms of a height limit, what are the impacts of setting that height limit, et cetera. So it's a bit of a process, and so we, we've started the process to get that going. And the reason for that priority being that April 9th date, and to ensure that, as of now, because there's no hard height limit in those zones, an applicant could come in for a cell tower, and there's no hard height limit, and we can impose limits that don't exist.
Right. I'm just commenting on a draft that I saw of city council priorities. And I just want to make sure this is, and I know council member Haney and Wirick are here, thank goodness, always listening to these things, so I just, I guess it doesn't go, maybe it goes without saying, but Mr. Wirick is going to get up.
I could just add one point of information to Mr. Summers, is that Mr. Summers and Mr. Kramer advise council to not adopt filling the hole ordinance...
Yeah.
...as an urgency, that we not do it in urgency, that it was important that that not happen. Unfortunately, that puts more of the burden on all of us to get our act together as a commission and a council, to get it, you know, processed quickly, because we don't, we, they said there were legal reasons why we should, should do it in regular order and not as an urgency. So I just, I just want to point, that's a little of the background of why council said, please, please, let's get this going. Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other comments at this point? All right, now we've got subcommittee reports. I have a, just a couple of reports from Complete Streets, where we will not be meeting the first Wednesday of the month, that would be in March, because our meeting here is going to be canceled, we're going to be at a seminar, most of the commissioners. And we will be meeting with Nelson Nygaard, the engineers who have been awarded the contract for the Complete Streets Implementation Plan, which I'm so excited about it. Is that something we've, that's been uppermost and topmost on our agenda? And I apologize, I don't have the date, but I think, I believe it's March 18th, but I will send it to Sherry, and she's going to put out a notification for that. But basically, it's going to be kind of an internal, but it is open to the public. We're not going to be taking public comment. The consultant will be leading that meeting. And then, oh, I just wanted to find out the status of the landscape ordinance. I know, only because I worked on it for so long.
Well, I'm, I don't have a really good answer for you, other than to say, what I always say, is that it's, just gets shifted priorities all the time, and I will be, hopefully be able to move that forward for you. It's really just the handout we're working on at this point, you know, not the ordinance itself, but the actual...
Or the guidelines?
Guidelines, right.
Yeah, and please feel free to contact me if you have questions, as I was one of the co-authors.
I really appreciate that, that's, thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to bring one other thing up. I know towards the end of the year, we thought the planning commission was going to have kind of the goal-setting meeting with city council, and because we had kind of flip-flopped, I think HPC ended up taking that meeting, and they counted a meeting we had done in the fall as our goal-setting meeting. I'm not sure that we really did that. And I know that oftentimes, every year, you know, we come up with goals. I'm just putting it out there, not that we have to, you know, decide on something tonight, but just for consideration, if that's something we may want to do. And of course, Chair Foster will be resuming his role, and maybe it's something we can discuss. Does that need to be agendized, or would that just come up under, like, committee reports?
Something like a goal or a work plan. I'd recommend agendizing as a discussion of a work plan, or discussion of a goal plan, something like that. That way, it's clear to the public that if they want to see what the commission will be doing for the next six months, a year, they'll know that that's going to be discussed.
Okay, good. Well, I would actually just feel better, you know, having the chair here, and maybe just bringing that comment up again, and then let him decide if we wanted, you know, maybe we don't want to do any goal-setting, I'm not sure, but I'm just bringing it up because I think it's a good idea. All right? Last but not least, our city council liaison.
Will?
City Council member Randy Haney?
I bring my assistant to all my meetings now, because I attend, because I attend his meetings. You know, I think the most important thing for a liaison is to be seen and not heard. Seriously. I think sitting back here and listening and watch you folks do your job is, I enjoy it. And I enjoy it when you streamline your conversations, and you get to the points, and you make quick decisions, because that's going to allow you to do more things for us. And you did just a brilliant job tonight. You gathered the information, you digested it, you made a decision, and you moved on. And that's, that's all we could ask from you. The, I just want to touch on one thing. First of all, I want to thank you all for volunteering, and I, and I don't think any of us can say that enough. We recognize it, and I know I did it, from the recreation and park standpoint, for eight years, and I know, I know the value of it. What William alluded to earlier is, we're trying to change some of the dynamics of commissions and councils. And by doing that, what William came out and talked about, the importance of when the city council puts a moratorium on something, the importance of the follow-through. And I think what, what we're trying to do is change that. Whereas in the past, we may have put a moratorium on something, and then not worried about it, and, you know, life goes on. And what we're trying to say is, is when we make a decision like that, that's going to affect the community, that the commissions that have to be a part of that, we would just like them to recognize that it's, that if we don't act, one, we're not doing our job, but two, if we don't act, we're going to affect a lot of people. So we're trying to change that dynamic. So the emphasis tonight is just to let you know that we did do something, that we have asked you in turn to do something, and to put it on your agenda as soon as you can, so that we can all move forward with it. That's, that's all it was meant to be. And you're going to see more of that. We're just, you know, we're trying to change the mode of operation, and we're just trying to be accountable, and I'm sure you all want to be accountable, even if you're volunteering, because that, you know, you've just showed that. So having said that, I don't have any more to add. You guys did a great job tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Haney. And I wanted to thank my fellow commissioners, I want to thank staff and members of the public for all being here and being part of the process. Meeting adjourned.